Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, November the 7th of 2023. And believe it or not, we're already in the month of November. Absolutely. One more month ago. In fact, commissioners, we only have about a half a month because on Tuesday, December the 12th, is our final meeting for the year. So we're calling our meeting to order this year, this month, this morning, today, right now. Absolutely. Are you all ready to move forward with the meeting this morning?
We're waiting on you.
We've got a robust calendar this morning, a lot of things to talk about, a lot of people to celebrate this morning, too. So as we call our meeting to order this morning, we'll start with special recognitions and up front, I see, and up first is the EMA Department, none other than Director Dan Morgan. Director, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm Dan Morgan. I'm the Director of Emergency Management, which gloriously today is also over animal services. And we have a very special award that was given to us by a nationwide organization for the animal shelter and all the workers there. So if you would let me go, this is the Best Friends Animal Society, a leading national animal welfare organization dedicated to ending the euthanasia of all dogs and cats in America's shelters. Their goal of program of Save Them All, they are working with rescues, shelters, and other members nationwide to achieve this goal. Besides running, they run the nation's largest no-kill sanctuary for companion animals. They also provide adoption, spay, neuter, educational programs nationwide, and they manage the Best Friends Network, which is comprised of thousands of animal welfare organizations working toward a no-kill sheltering option. In 2022, over 15,000 dogs and cats were euthanized in shelters in Georgia alone. Best Friends is working with these animal welfare organizations and stakeholders to reach a no-kill in Georgia in 2025. For shelter operation to be considered no-kill, it must reach 90% or higher save rate by using adoptions, foster and rescue groups, and other animal placement methods. I am proud to announce that in 2022, the Rockdale County Animal Services met this criteria by having a no-kill shelter rate, a save rate of 95.7%. And I would like to ask CG and his staff to come up for the formal presentation. Best Friends is recognizing animal Rockdale County as a no-kill shelter for 2022. Hold on, CG. Get the whole staff in here. And on behalf of Best Friends and the Commissioners, I would like to present you and your staff this no-kill shelter plaque from Best Friends, the nationwide organization specifically for Rockdale County Animal Services and Animal Control for 2023.
Morning, CG Baker, Division Manager, Animal Services. When I first started with Rockdale County Animal Services in 2006, reaching a no-kill status and having the needed tools to be successful was just a dream. Even 10 years ago, it was still a dream. However, under this administration, we have found that my dreams are becoming a reality. When I started my employment here, I remember the shelter only having a 20% to 25% live release rate, working with one of two rescue groups. And at that time, Rockdale County had a much smaller pet and human population. It's amazing to see how far we've come in the last 18 years. Now with a much larger human and pet population and working with over 100 rescue groups, we have reached no-kill status for 2022. I am beyond excited and proud of my team for this accomplishment. I want to thank my dedicated team, wonderful leadership, animal-loving advocates, rescue groups, citizens, and the support of the Board of Commissioners. I cannot wait to see what else we can accomplish. However, the hard work is not over. We still need the continued support of the team, leadership, advocates, rescue groups, citizens, and especially the Board of Commissioners to continue improving and working towards being able to maintain this status. 2023 has been a difficult year for animal controls all over the United States. And here in Rockdale, we've had our share of difficult days. But I hope that we will be able to continue to work towards and making the steps to continue our life-saving efforts. We need more people to spay and neuter their pets, adopt shelter pets, and be responsible by following all the animal control ordinances. If you'd like to adopt a pet, the shelter is located at 1506 Rockbridge Road. Our viewing hours are Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00 to 4:30, and you can call the shelter for any questions at 770-278-8403. One thing that I would like to say is, although we mainly deal with dogs and cats, that's not always the case, just in the past couple of weeks, we've had sheep, horse, pig, ball python, leopard geckos, and even a tarantula. So if you're, if you're looking for your next best friend, whether it has fur or scales, definitely check with us. So, thank you all.
Let's give CG another round of applause. Director Morgan, just before CG, our longtime manager, who is the hands-on guru for Rockdale County and has been for a long time. CG, I want you to go back to the podium just for a second, and I really want you to give us a little bit more in-depth information about why this no-kill award is really a big deal, particularly for Rockdale County. Talk about that because it was just only a couple of years ago that you, myself, Chief Sanders, and a few of the leaders met with a large crowd of folks from Rockdale County and talked about us changing our policies and procedures. Talk about it for a moment.
Yes, sir. The, of course...
And I know what you're talking at microphone, too. Because I've got an upgraded microphone system, and I want to take full advantage of it.
Yes, so no-kill has become a very popular and sought-after recognition for animal shelters all over the world, you know, especially in the United States, because there is such a high euthanasia rate, especially in the South. Georgia being one of the southern states, we tend to see a higher euthanasia rate than some of the others. So in 2020, I think it was, we started meeting with a large group of animal advocates and people that lived here in Rockdale County that wanted to see some changes at Animal Services. And so we actually came up with a strategic plan, and that was adopted by the Board in 2021. And so we have been working towards that. And our, one of our goals in the strategic plan was to be considered no-kill by Best Friends by 2024 or 20...
2024, 2025.
Yeah, 2024, 2025. So reaching that in 2022, just one year after the adoption of the plan, is an amazing accomplishment. I mean, it's taken a lot of work, and, you know, everything just fell the way it needed to. So, you know, our goal will be to continue trying to maintain this and, you know, hopefully continue with our strategic plan.
Well, it says a lot about you and your team. And while we're talking about team, Commissioners, I do want to point out the fine folks who are part of our Animal Services divisions. Oftentimes, some of our regular citizens don't see these folks on a day-to-day basis. CG went down the list of other animals and creatures that they have over there other than cats and dogs. And I think it takes special people, a special individual, to do the kind of work... Y'all give them another round of applause. It's been no secret, and I'm not ashamed, not in the least bit, to talk about my fear and phobia of cats, let alone a snake, a tarantula, and all them other creatures. Those folks in those blue shirts, I'll give them another round of applause. Those are special people. They're doing what most people will run away from and wouldn't do, but we have a very passionate, should I say, Animal Services Division, who is very responsive to the needs of both the City Police Department and the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. We work very closely with them, and I'm going to yield now to Director Morgan. He's got some more good information to share.
I do, and I have one more thing to add, is another great tool in Animal Services Toolbox to help with the adoptions is I'd like to invite everyone here after the BOC. We have our newest addition to the fleet. It is a 20-foot adoption trailer that is out in the parking lot behind the BOC. We would love to show you this thing that you'll starting to see at events all around the county and probably all around the metro area as we try to get out there and push these adoptions to even get more people to have these wonderful pets in their home. It was purchased by capital funds, and we've already put it to use, and we've already got a number of events between now and February already booked for it. People saw it in the paper. They're like, bring it here, we want to see it, we want you to bring a bunch of dogs and cats out here. So we're very excited to have this tool that we can forward this. And I want to remind everybody, this is an annual award. We cannot rest on our laurels. Every year, we have to meet this stat. So that's our goal. It's not just we've made it and we're done. And I also remind everybody, there's two types of people in Rockdale County. Those who have adopted a dog or a cat, and those who want to adopt a dog or a cat. Thank you.
I have a question. Is the tarantula going to be on the adoption trailer?
No, the tarantula or the snake is not in the adoption trailer. Those are special cases, and we find appropriate homes for those animals. They are not back in the shelter, no.
And before you, Director, thank you so much. Before you all leave, only you'll get to the Commissioner. Commissioner Washington, any comments for Director Morgan and Manager Baker?
This is amazing, and it also is a testament to citizen advocacy because it was a citizen group that came to us, and they were adamant that we needed to make changes to the shelter. And it's a testament to us that we listen and we have something that we should be, we can be, we are proud of. A beautiful facility, a great organization, and then to achieve a goal a year ahead of time is like the icing on the cake. Congratulations, you all are doing an outstanding job, and I want to see us get that no-kill every year from here on out.
We do, too.
Commissioner Williams?
So did you bring Sadie with you today?
No, we didn't, but she is readily available. We have, if anyone actually seriously is looking for a dog, we have the darling of all dogs over there right now who would just crawl in your car right now and go home with you.
We, Animal Services had the ribbon cutting yesterday morning for the adoption trailer, and they had Sadie, who is the most loving darling dog. So I hope she goes to a good home because I can't take her, but I wish I could. So are there pets in the trailer this morning?
No, because of the time, we would have been in here until the end of the BOC and all the staff being here, we did not bring any animals today. So essentially, it is a empty trailer. We can walk through and talk through how it's used, but we already, it will be full of animals at the Autumn Fest two Sundays from now, and it will be in the Christmas Parade. And we already have two events lined up for the Booksellers Fair right here in Alltown. What's the other one?
And Cherry Blossom.
And Cherry Blossom. So it will be readily available and viewed with animals in it, ready for people to take home.
And Director Morgan, what is the number? Because so many people are watching this broadcast. What's that number for schools, churches, organizations, nonprofits, who are having events, and they'd like to have your adoption trailer come out? Give us that number slow so they can, somebody's pulling out a pen now, and they're going to write it down because they're going to give you a call, so...
Perfect. We'd love for them to call Rockdale County Animal Services at 770-278-8403 and ask specifically about adoptions. If you would like to come in and make an appointment or come by and see an individual dog, or if you have a large event and want this animal trailer there, we will book it just like a birthday party. We'll be there.
All right. Thank you. Another round of applause. Thank you so much. There are so many departments and divisions throughout Rockdale County that make this county the great county that it is, and it takes every one of our departments and divisions to do what we need to do to service the citizens of Rockdale County. Absolutely. And I heard what he said about two kinds of people, those who adopt and those that wish they would adopt in Rockdale County.
You're praising Jeremy.
Yes, sir. It's all right.
We got it.
It's all right. All right, no charge.
Not yet. CG, pray more.
All right, next up, there's some more excitement, Commissioners. We have another proclamation, and I'm going to yield to Commissioner Washington as she reads this proclamation this morning.
Whereas Mr. John E. McDonald has been an invaluable member of the Delta Airlines family for a remarkable 32 years, commencing his journey as a part-time employee and ascending through various vital roles within the company. And whereas in 2015, Mr. McDonald was bestowed with the highest honor a Delta employee can receive, the prestigious Delta Chairman's Club Award, reflecting his exceptional dedication and service. And whereas on September 27th, 2023, a conference room was rightfully renamed in his honor, a reflection of his outstanding contributions that have left an indelible mark. And whereas we take immense pride in celebrating this outstanding milestone with Mr. McDonald, a cherished resident of Rockdale County, who has not only excelled in his professional endeavors, but has also actively worked to improve our community by generously volunteering his time. And whereas Mr. McDonald extends his commitment to the spiritual well-being of the community through his active membership in New Birth Missionary Baptist Church in Stonecrest, Georgia, where he serves with unwavering dedication across various ministries. And whereas he is a distinguished alumnus of Alcorn State University, the son of John and Edward McDonald Sr., and his blissful union with his spouse Stephanie McDonald is a testament to his commitment to family values that enrich our community. And whereas Rockdale is proud to be the home of such an outstanding member of the community, and we bid him well-wishers on his future endeavors now. Therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2023 as John McDonald Appreciation Day. Commissioner, Chairman Oz Nesbit Sr., Sheri L. Washington, Commissioner Post 1, and Doreen Williams, Commissioner Post 2.
Mr. McDonald, we'd like to call up your loving wife, and your parents are here. Let's give them all a round of applause. Both your parents. Come on up. Mr. McDonald, Mrs. McDonald, y'all come on up. Give the parents a round of applause. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Our podium is really nice, but could you guys stand in front of this?
Yes, yes. So we want to hear from, you know, let me say this, Commissioners, real quick, and we're here for Mr. McDonald. So we have so many talented people all throughout Rockdale County. And as I was listening to Commissioner Washington read the proclamation, I was reminded that the longest-serving senior pilot for Delta Airlines, Mr. Flanagan, Captain Flanagan, also resides in Rockdale County. And then this morning, to hear that Mr. McDonald has received the highest award that a Delta Airlines employee can receive, and he lives and resides in Rockdale County. Give them another round of applause. So many people are giving us bragging rights to say that there's only two kinds of people, those that live in the county and those that wish they lived in Rockdale County. But I really want to take a moment and yield and hear from Mr. McDonald. I want you to share a little bit of insight about your time and tenure with Delta Airlines over 30-plus years and about the role and responsibility that you have now. And lastly, I'll add that Mr. McDonald was very influential, working with the Department of Talent Management on a major recruitment event in terms of hiring talent here in Rockdale County. I'm going to yield to Mr. McDonald.
First of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for this proclamation, and my family for coming and being with me today. I started at Delta as a part-time employee. My very first paycheck was $277.34. I make more than that now, but I started out as a ramp agent and worked my way through the company, and now I'm an HR recruiter for certain departments at Delta, where we do the hiring and interviewing and all that. And that's basically, I worked my way through the company, again, starting out as a part-time employee. I think I worked four years part-time before I became a full-time employee, and have worked various departments since then. And then I moved to Rockdale County now, I think it's about 18 years ago, and I've been here, one of the, I think, the best counties in the state. And I first met the chairman at Bojangles. I was getting my car inspected, and they were closed, so I went to Bojangles, and he was sitting there campaigning. And I just walked up to him, and I've known him ever since, and he's been a real good friend since then. I met Ms. Washington 2015 when she beat me out for Post 1 Chairman, so I owe her one. And Dr. Williams, I've met her on several times. But I appreciate this proclamation. I thank you so much. It is a great honor, and I was really shocked when I got the phone call to be here today. So I'm thankful. Thank you.
Very quickly, y'all, if I was Mr. McDonald, give us just one more and another of advice. So many young people are moving through life with employment opportunities. You started off as a part-time employee at Delta Airlines. You can remember your very first paycheck. Tell us about the tenacity to stick and stay in some of those things now that you're recruiter for Delta. What are you all looking for in terms of soft skills and hard skills and messages that you can give to young people? You've talked to me multiple times about people's dress code. Talk to us about that.
So one of the reasons I've stayed because my daddy wasn't going to let me move back home, so I had to do this. That's one reason I stayed. But yes, as a recruiter and recruiter for Delta, we're looking for the very best employees. A lot of issues we have now in HR is people, how they come dressed, how they come prepared, don't come prepared for interviews and all that. It's sad, but that's the way it is right now, and we're hoping to improve that by some of the events that we've tried to hold here in Rockdale County to help younger people or even older people with their skills on how to interview for jobs and all that. So hopefully, we'll get some more stuff here in Rockdale County to help people with interviews, and if they're interested in me coming to talk to them about interviews, I'll be glad to do that. But that's basically how it works in that department at Delta Airlines.
You're making Rockdale County look good. Y'all give them another round of applause. Yes, and give his loving parents another round of applause. All right, we've got even more good news. I'm going to yield to Commissioner Dr. Doreen Williams, and she's going to tell us about this proclamation that she has as well. Dr. Williams?
Okay, a proclamation. Whereas Governor Brian Kemp proclaimed Sunday, November 5th, 2023, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia. I wish I'd known that Sunday.
Have you taken the day off?
Whereas there are more than 130,000 retired educators in Georgia, of whom more than 35,000 are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and more than 220 retired educators registered with the Rockdale Association. And whereas these retired educators of Georgia donate hundreds of, donate thousands of hours of volunteer service each year and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. In addition to the more than three hundred volunteer service hours to our community, the Rockdale Retired Educators Association has provided to date sixty-nine scholarships totaling eighty-three thousand dollars to local students who have completed their freshman year in college.
That's, we can applaud right there. That's a big deal. Yes.
Whereas celebrating our retired educators provides an essential opportunity to spotlight their unwavering service to Rockdale County and to Georgia and the unparalleled contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make to enhance the quality of life of our youth and citizens. And whereas the Rockdale Retired Educators Association contribute to First Readers, which supplies a book a month to children up to the age of five. Through funding at their holiday auction and raffles at monthly meetings, the Rockdale Retired Educators Association cares for the community further by distributing school supplies and supporting Rockdale emergency relief. And whereas Rockdale County praises our retired educators for the vital role they have played in shaping the education system, the lives of our youth and our families in the communities we call home. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute our retired educators for being outstanding community examples and celebrate with them this special day of significance by declaring November seventh, twenty twenty-three, as Rockdale Retired Educators' Day, whereby we will show our appreciation and call upon all citizens of Rockdale County to observe the day in an appropriate manner that honors retired educators. Signed by Oz Nesbit Senior Chairman, Sheri L. Washington, Commissioner Post One, and Doreen Williams, Commissioner Post Two.
Do we have any recipients, any retired educators here who can receive, other than Commissioner Dr. Doreen Williams? I'm going to get to her in just a second, Andrea. I'm talking about, is there anybody in the audience that can receive on behalf? All right, come on up. Absolutely. You, are you a retired educator? That's what I'm looking for at this very moment.
Fifteen years with the county, so I do.
Come on up. All right, give her a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I keep staying in Rockdale County, as you can tell. It's a little system to the Board of Commissioners, so I'm very.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just say very quickly, the world revolves around education and teachers. None of us can get to anything that we do from head start kindergarten to first grade all the way through college, you have to have educators. So and all of us can remember that favorite teacher or coach or principal that was an impactful person in our lives along the way. So we say thank you to all of our educators, particularly the ones here in Rockdale County, and all of those who are serving our students all across the country. We also give a big shout out to our very own retired educator, Dr. Doreen Williams. Give him another round of applause. Moving on, we still have a little bit more good stuff this morning. So it looks like the introduction of our new Code Enforcement Chief and how they're going to be doing some things new and differently here in Rockdale County through code enforcement. Come on up, Director Njoku, in charge of planning and development, which includes the Code Enforcement Division. Director Njoku, how are you this morning?
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Can you hear me, Chairman? This is better.
It's very good. You're on point.
All right, that's what I'm talking. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for your time. So I am super, super excited this morning to introduce to you or reintroduce to you Rockdale County's code enforcement. But I'd like to reintroduce it to you with just some numbers that I'd like for you to bear in mind. Ninety-six thousand seventy-three residents currently live in Rockdale County right now. Six county quadrants are what our code enforcement actually police on a regular basis. And not in a matter of policing, as the Sheriff's Department do it, but the maintenance of our codes regarding our properties and the way that our county looks in its beautification. To date, well over fourteen hundred inspections done by our code enforcement officers, collecting to date well over a hundred and twenty-four tons worth of trash and debris to maintain our county. This is done not by an army of one hundred, but this is done by the few thirty-six. Every day, these men and women show up in Rockdale County to serve this county to its utmost capabilities, upholding the code and upholding the standards that Rockdale County has put forth to be a place where everybody would love to live. This morning, I want to introduce code enforcement in our new structure. I would like to call up to the podium first and foremost, before we introduce or to introduce our new chief, so that he can introduce it to some of the men and the women that I just described that made these numbers possible and continue to make those numbers possible year in and year out. Rockdale County has made a significant change. We've moved one of our dedicated workers who has spent the past five years and has spent over seventeen years in public service into the area of our Deputy Director. We're super excited to have Douglas Chandler to serve as our Deputy Director over code enforcement as well as for the CID Division. He brings the stability that we need for that department and the structure and is leading this team of thirty-six forward to make sure that the codes are well-maintained and they're done in a manner that actually speaks to community engagement and enforcement. We're leading now with education. We recognize that you don't know what you simply don't know. And we also recognize that we have a county that needs help. Not all enforcement has to come in the form of a fine. Sometimes enforcement can come in some information and some guidance and some help. And we believe that Deputy Director Chandler is the man for the job. With him, and he's been here for five years, and a team of others here, I would like for him to be able to come to the podium, not just to introduce to our, with our brand-new chief, who we are also very excited about, but to also highlight some of the other people that have made the numbers that I specified this morning so true and are committed to beating meeting and exceeding these numbers in the years ahead as Rockdale County moves from ninety-six thousand to the potential Rockdale one hundred that we're too excited about. I'd like to call to the podium Deputy Director, Dr. Chandler.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioners, leadership, and Rockdale County citizens. So thank you, Director Njoku, for presenting and laying the pavement, if you will. So first in my almost five years of being here, and it feels like it's almost done. So I'll say, my arrival in the spring of twenty nineteen, you know, it's been a ride. And I'm still holding on.
Keep holding.
I've had the pleasure of leading and guiding and developing the county's code enforcement team. In just last April, twenty twenty-two, an addition of a second community, second division, which is that Community Improvement Division. So as you folks that do not know, code enforcement, one, I think we're a go see about it all, right? And that's one of the things that we pride ourselves on. If we get a phone call, we're going to go check out about it. We're going to go see about it. Our Community Improvement Division, led by Corey Brown, so you all know he's in the room today. Mr. Brown, right? So since that April, twenty twenty-two, led and built and grew this team of five. And now we're in a mass of fourteen. So they're out there six days a week, cleaning up our streets, our highways, our byways, our right-of-ways, illegal dump sites, and each and everything that you can imagine that's out there. So over the last almost five years, again, I've built a lot of relationships with several different departments, different county employees, and some have come, some have went, right? So we'll just start that relationship all over again. So I understand that just not this small team that we have of thirty-six. I lead hands-on of twenty-six, but it takes the entire team, each and every department. Code enforcement, we touch animal control, that was just here, storm water, Rockdale Water Resources, Sheriff's Department, and many, many more, right? So with that being said, our collaborations with special events, you may see us not just in your community, you may see us at an event, operating traffic. You may see us organizing different things to keep people moving. Crowd control, you may see us out here in the weather to where it's either, it might be storming and raining and hailing, right? Our code enforcement team, our Community Improvement Division are out there in the streets. So what I look forward to is twenty twenty-four and beyond. As you know, the county's growing. I do this all the time. I sit here, and it's growing and swelling. So we need to be ready and prepared. So for the future, right, we have taken a deep dive and working diligently behind the scenes to get ready for twenty twenty-four, to get ready for that growth by process improvements, training, performance management, education, and community engagement. Right, aging to equip the team with the best skills to best serve Rockdale County citizens. So it's all about that. If you heard it already, gold standard. So but I can't do it by myself, right? I can't do it by myself. It takes committed, well-trained, disciplined team to win. And I got some wins under my belt, right, as a whole, right? And it took every department, everyone that's represented here, and all my staff to do so. So the twenty-six employees that I serve, I would like to extend my gratitude to each and every one of them, right, for their hard work, their dedication, and serving this county and its citizens, its community. But first, before I go, before, as you know, I'm here to introduce a new asset to the team. However, I just want to highlight some folks before I do that, because again, it takes team. So we have a code enforcement analyst. His name is Kevin McCartney. Right now, he is in our magistrate court, where we have proceedings taking care, going on there right now. So he will be responsible for, again, he's the numbers man, right? He keeps track of what we do, right? He's also makes sure our magistrate court, all our citations and cases are carried on through. Right, we have a special projects coordinator, Kathy Balbueno, to where she will be responsible for our education and community engagement and process improvements. Very talented young lady, and definitely an asset to our team as well.
Kathy's here. Stand up Kathy, so they can see who you are. Absolutely. Give her a round of applause.
And as well, I've already mentioned, Mr. Brown, Corey Brown.
Everybody knows Corey Brown. Stand up Corey, so they can see you. Absolutely.
That's the man that keeps it clean. He's keeping it clean, right? So and last but not least, I'm excited to introduce a new leader to you. Not just a new leader, but a new coach, a new team member. And at the same time, he's still in the, in the learning zone, right? So there's a lot to learn. And I present to you, and with a warm welcome, Alonso Haran Jr.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rockdale County.
Good morning.
To the Honorable Oz Nesbit Senior, Commissioner Williams, and Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
To my colleagues and the rest of Rockdale County. My name is Alonso Haran Jr., and I am from Newark, New Jersey. I bring you twenty years of law and code enforcement experience. I retired in twenty eighteen from the Newark Police Department. In July of this year, I was hired as your new chief code enforcement officer for Rockdale County. I have been welcomed with open arms, and it's been a breath of fresh air ever since. Code enforcement plays a vital role in maintaining the overall quality of life here in Rockdale County with a commitment of ensuring public safety through building inspections, property maintenance, zoning compliance, business license, and nuisance abatement. The question is, how do we get there? As your chief, it is my job to go out here and motivate so we can educate, communicate, and collaborate within the county so that way you can appreciate what we do on a day-to-day basis. I have been charged with developing, leading, and training seven code officers and twelve community improvement techs to serve Rockdale's county citizens. I am excited in the future by our team to show unity in our community. Thank you.
Chief Haran, welcome aboard. Let's give him a round of applause. Commissioners, we're excited about this new leadership and new direction of our code enforcement team and the leadership of our community improvement team. I think we have the right talent on board and the right level of leadership to move Rockdale County. As you heard Director Njoku talk about the gold standard and moving us beyond now with ninety-six plus thousand residents here in Rockdale County. We must think differently. We must lead differently. And I really appreciate what each one of the leaders said as they took to the podium this morning. It's about education, information, and collaboration and making sure that we don't focus on writing you a citation as much as we are on educating you about how to keep the property values at a gold standard so everyone in the community can have a gold standard and a property value that meets the standard that we're trying to maintain here in Rockdale County. No one wants to live next to, in front of, behind, or across from Sanford G. Fred G. Sanford. So code enforcement is is out there to go and work with Mr. Sanford and talk to him even before we give him a citation. But after so much talking, I think what the chief has made very clear, Mr. Sanford is going to be making his way into magistrate court after a reasonable amount of time. So that's very important because everyone wants to maintain a quality of life in Rockdale County, and code enforcement certainly helps us do it. Commissioner Washington, any comments regarding code enforcement and community improvement this morning?
Sure. First of all, thank you, Director Njoku, for executing this plan. Code enforcement is something that's dear, near and dear to all of our hearts. It's like the chairman said, we're looking for a gold standard in the community. And it's up to you all to inform the citizens what we are expecting of them because that's what takes our, distinguishes our community from other communities, just the fact that we do have standards and we do expect for those that choose to live in this community to adhere to those standards. So I commend you all. There's never been, especially Corey Brown. I've called him, and he has been Johnny on the spot every time. But just code enforcement in general has always been responsive to our needs. And I know we are going to expect the same level of participation and even more. Mr. Chandler has done an outstanding job in his, in his tenure, and I'm expecting the same from you all. So thank you all. I'm looking forward to a robust twenty twenty-four where we get this plan going. But one of the things that struck me is that the director set forth the science of this. Like, it's not something that you just go do, pick up trash or whatever. There's, there's processes that have to go in place. There's a certain amount of leadership that has to be in place in order for this whole thing to work. And it's great to, for you all to explain to the citizens what is going on, but for us to see the end results. The amount of trash that's been picked up is astounding. It's still more trash out there, so we're going to keep picking it up. But just the, from where we started, when we start, where I took the seat under this leadership to where we are now is tremendous, and I thank you all for, for making this a priority.
Absolutely. Commissioner Williams?
So I was thinking back to, to when I first took office in two thousand and fifteen and what a distance we've come in that time. We didn't have a CID team at that time. Code enforcement was kind of small and didn't do a whole lot, not as much as the citizens wanted done. And so now we have a really robust system in place for people to become educated, like you said. So thank you. Welcome to Rockdale County.
So thank you, welcome to Rockdale County. And thank you and we look forward to the work that you will continue to do with our teams here.
Yes. Chief, welcome aboard, give him another round of applause. Commissioners, that concludes, I believe, all of our special recognitions. I, I do want to add one other because we've got a new addition to our customer service department over in RWR. And I'm going to ask Deputy Director Vaughn Jameson if you would come at this time, Mr. Jameson. They've got me on a timer, which means I've got you on a timer.
Absolutely, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, I am on the clock. Mr. Chairman, you say it all the time, nobody gets anything done by themselves. And RWR is so excited to have some new additions. Right before I get to the customer service manager, I did want to point out a few other additions that we have over at RWR. Number one, Kelly Foster, many people in this room may know that name, but she's been with us over twelve years. Kelly has served as one of our business liaison in our business affairs division. She's also served as an interim customer service manager. Kelly, after the retirement of Teresa Jacobs that many of us knew and loved, took, agreed to take up on the position as our new business affairs manager. So I wanted to first say that she couldn't be here today, but she's our new business affairs manager. Secondly, Mr. Chandler talked about information and this is the technological age where information is so important. We brought in Mr. Casey Jones, some talent that was right there at our water treatment plant. Casey Jones has over eight years of business data analytics. He's working on his PhD in information technology. He's our new numbers guy and we're super duper excited to have him a part of this team also. But last and certainly not least.
And before you do that, let's give Kelly Foster and Casey Jones a round of applause. Wow. Absolutely, I mean, that is just enormous talent all throughout and, and we would have known, not known so. We know who Kelly Foster is, we didn't know Mr. Jones was working on his PhD and that says a lot again about the caliber of employees that we have. You've got more for us, tell us.
Yes, sir. And certainly not, certainly not, last but not least, I'm super excited about this position because we've been juggling quite a bit ourselves over there. But Ms. Xavier Henry, a na-, actually not a native, but a Rockdale resident. We found some talent right over here in Rockdale County. She has over eight years of customer care experience in one of the larger home improvement companies in the world. And she was over there and we had an opportunity to meet with her, to chat with her and she is our new customer service manager right there at Big Blue.
All right, come on up Ms. Henry.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone, my name is Xavier Henry, I'm excited to be here as the RWR water, RWR, sorry, customer experience man, customer service manager. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous because I didn't know I was going to be put on the squad today, but hey, I'm here.
That's all right, why don't you just let me just say this to you real quick? Just take a deep breath and breathe and lean forward to that microphone so we can hear you. Because as you step onboard with Rockdale County, we want to hear you and see you. Now tell us about all this new stuff you're going to bring to RWR and customer service, Ms. Henry.
Well, outside of pipes and fittings that I'm familiar with over where I came from, my job is to be the face of Rockdale Water Resources. I'm here to see, to know, you know, what's going on as far as our customers. Just be the face and represent, you know, take care of our customers, so I'll be that person for you guys.
Welcome aboard, give her a round of applause. Let me just tell you, y'all know it's not easy coming to that podium and getting to that microphone, especially when you're caught off guard, Commissioners, and you just don't know. But I will tell you that Director Peak and Deputy Director Jameson did give me an earful about the role and responsibility of Ms. Henry and what she is going to be doing in the customer service division of RWR. Particularly here in Rockdale County, we have a demographic of people who still come into the building and pay their water bill, they still go through the drive-through. Although we have all of the high technology of online option and all those other options, we've got a demographic that still literally want to come into the building. We call it Big Blue over there. Having the right personality of a person who knows how to engage with our citizens and work through the different challenges sometimes, particularly our seniors, is critically important to having those people onboard our team to know how to have a level of patience and working through whatever the problem is in Rockdale County. So Ms. Henry, we're counting on you to continue to keep that bloodstain banner raised way high. Give another round of applause. All right, it's time to rock and roll now, we're going to move into agenda review. We'll start with Tuesday, November fourteenth agenda and I'll yield to you, Executive Director.
Okay, we have one item under unfinished business. It is item three, five thirty-one. This was for five various engineering firms through the Transportation Department for 2023 on-call materials and field testing and analysis services. This were unit price contracts, this for two years with option to renew three additional one-year periods. And there were five of the consultants that were listed below and this was under unfinished business.
So, okay, so I've got an email this morning from Michelle, I'm sorry, CFO Irazani, Irazeri, asking to sit and go over the contracts. My concern, Chairman, you weren't here, is that there are no minority contractors here. Especially the fact that we know of a, of a minority engineering firm. I've been talking with the, the president of that company and he says that he didn't even know about the opportunity to bid on this. So what I'd like to know is if number one, we can, is if there's a way that we can add a company, from what I understand, that particular company meets all the qualifications, they just didn't submit and talking with him, they don't, he didn't know to submit. And, and let me tell you why this is so important to me, that we have minority businesses. We had a transportation summit and I'm going to give my kudos about that later. But if you look at the amount of transportation projects that are coming through this county, unprecedented amounts, I mean, we have, we'll have transportation going from the north side, south side, east side, west side over the next five years. The amount of money that is, is life-changing. That's the ability to do advanced workforce development. That's the, the ability to do so many things and we have to make sure that we have minority participation when we're looking at putting that amount of money in this county over the next five years. I personally believe that the ancestors would be disappointed with me if I don't advocate now for minority participation when there's this much opportunity in this county. So I will stand on the fact that until we significantly address the minority businesses, I would vote against this. So my question is, can we add companies that are qualified? And I'm thinking of one in particular to this list, even if we vote for it. I don't want to stop progress.
Right.
I just want to make sure that those that are qualified are included.
Thank you, first of all, let me say thank you, Commissioner Washington, because the other week when I was out, I received multiple calls and.
They always calling on you.
Yes, well, let me just, well, I think you're going to be proud of this, so let me finish. I received multiple calls from our executive leadership team as well as a call and a detailed arm-length text message from Director Kelly. I understood about, in fact, I had a chance to view the meeting myself. We've also talked with our CFO and what she has clearly given us is instructions on our own internal policies and procedures as it relates to procurement. We have to practice what we preach. And I share your concern that we need to make sure that the playing field is wide open for opportunities for any minority women-owned businesses throughout Rockdale County. The Commissioner made reference to the fact that we have a lot of contracts, a lot of work moving all through Rockdale County. One of the things that our chief strategy officer has done a fantastic job with this reimagined Rockdale strategic plan is making certain, we're starting with this courthouse project, as you well know, is making certain, number one, because I heard what you said, that people are informed, they're educated, they know about how to do business the proper way with Rockdale County. And what we're trying to do is make sure, we've made some announcements even in this meeting about all of the different activities and moving parts that's going to be associated and affiliated with the building of the brand-new facility that's coming online here with the new courthouse and the government complex. To drill down into the concern of Commissioner Washington, I want you to know that yes, there is more than one opportunity to make a wave and make provisions so that those interested parties, particularly those people who are in Rockdale County that want to participate in the bidding process, that they contact our office. You feel free to escort them onto the campus, to Ms. Malone's office, to the CFO office so that they can get them registered, they can explain to them how to participate as a bid process here in Rockdale County. And I, and I'm saying to folks, because I know folks are watching this broadcast right now, don't wait for us to come to you. We're telling you, come into our office because we have opportunities. Contact the finance department, that's where procurement is. And here's another thing, as I closed it out. For the three commissioners here in Rockdale County, one of the things, one of the several things that I'm most proud of, we've not been like multiple other counties in the region. We've not had any problems or issues with procurement. We pee cards or procurement, we don't entertain, we don't get in the way. I've had multiple people that I know personally that own and operate businesses. They come to my office and see Ms. Lee or they've come to see me. I've taken them next door, up to the third floor and dropped them off and I walked on back and got out of the way because I have nothing to do with the process. We have strict criteria, people must meet the criteria. And we as Commissioners can't get intimately involved in that. I'm glad that Commissioner Washington is shining the light on this area. We've talked about minority participation and we've got to practice what we preach. So Commissioner, whomever that individual is, please get him or her or them into our office, get them up to finance, over to Ms. Malone's office and procurement and do like I do. Walk away and leave it to procurement to follow the procedures, follow the guidelines and do what needs to be done. Now, to add to that, Chief Sanders, I want to make sure that going forward that you have an opportunity to work very closely with Commissioner Washington to make sure that what I'm asking for is carried out, implemented and executed beyond this meeting. Can I count on you to do that, Chief Sanders?
Yes.
So my question was, can we add another one at a later date? Once we, once we know that they are qualified to be on the list?
So I will get back to you, get with the CFO and we can answer that. You don't vote until next week, so we'll have that answer for you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Right, and I think that's good because what we don't want to do is set a precedence in the middle of the meeting. That's just, we can't just willing-nearly do that in the middle of the meeting because if we do that right now, somebody next week will be calling on one of us to do the same thing. We won't be practicing what we preach and then we'll be entertaining and setting a precedence that we can't do. We have an order, a policy and procedure, we have to do it the proper way. And I'm confident that we'll get it done, absolutely, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. So the next item will be under the regular agenda. It is that time of the year to update the capital improvements element. So what has been prepared is a transmittal resolution that would have the draft of the CIE attached to it and that would go to DCA and to Atlanta Regional Commission. As part of the meeting next Tuesday, some of the requirements is to hold a public hearing. So we'll be holding a public hearing in the middle of your regular board meeting to accept any comments about the draft that is circulating right now. And then after the end of the public hearing, we'll close that out and have the vote on the transmittal resolution. After DCA and ARC takes time to review the draft of the CIE, then upon the review, they'll send it back to you for final adoption. So that's kind of how that works.
Very good, this is a process that we do every year.
That's correct. All right, so I will just keep reading until I'm interrupted if that's good with the board.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so item five thirty-nine is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Department, the Senior Services Division. This is change order number one to contract 2022-189. This is for the Aging Sub Grant for Continuance of Funds through ARC, ARPA. The amount is eighty-five thousand, six hundred, seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents with a five thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents match. The term is July first, 2023 through June twenty-ninth, 2024, that should be 2024. Item five forty is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Department, Senior Services Division. This is for the Multi-Service Aging Sub Grant. The amount is four hundred, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred, seventy-one dollars and nine cents with a thirty-six thousand, six hundred, fifty-nine dollars, seventy-two cent match. The term is July first, 2023 through June thirtieth, 2024. Five forty-one is with the Corey Brown Band for Parks and Recreation Department for a band performance for the Sunday brunch at Costly Mill Park Event Center. The amount is three thousand, five hundred dollars, the date is November twelfth, 2023. Item five forty-two is the Erica Dawson exclusive through the Parks and Recreation Department for a band performance at the Autumn Festival located at fourteen-hundred Parker Road in the Blue Lot. The amount is four thousand, five hundred dollars, the date is November nineteenth, 2023. Item five forty-three is with Venus Taylor, author, Doing Business as Coach Venus LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department for an instructor for power and strength classes at Johnson Park Recreation Center and Costly Mill Park. It's a seventy-thirty split, the amount is three thousand dollars. The term is January first, 2024 through December thirty-first, 2024 with two twelve-month renewal options. Item five forty-four is with Redemption Road K-9 Incorporated through the Parks and Recreation Department for an instructor for K-9 obedience training classes at Johnson Park, at Johnson Dog Park and Richardson Park. This is a seventy-thirty split, the amount is twelve thousand dollars. The term is January first, 2024 through December thirty-first, 2024 with two twelve-month renewal options.
Can, can we talk about this is?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So next to the, the horse, learning how to ride the horse, the equestrian training, this is very interesting, I'm excited about this. I wish they had this when I had Keisha, but this is, I'm excited. Is there anybody who can talk a little bit more about?
Yes, come on up, Ms. Bean, she is the representative for Parks and Rec today. I don't know if she knows all the details on that part, but all the other leadership that's here is absent and she is the designated, Ms. Bean, good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioners and Chairman.
Concerns of the Commission?
Well, yes, I did briefly speak with Director Redman on yesterday about this one just in case you guys had any questions. And with this one, the K-9 obedience classes, it is, we do a seventy-thirty split and they come out and do the training on our fields with the canines, so.
So just basic, sit, heel, roll over, jump?
Well, to be honest with you, Commissioner Washington, I don't know in depth with all they do, but I do know they do do the basic training.
You know, I got to appreciate your honesty there, absolutely.
But I'll definitely have Director Redman follow up with you on that.
Well, listen, let me say this, Commissioner, I got to believe that with a seventy-thirty split, it has to be more than sit, stop and roll with, with the dog. I mean, you enroll your dog in the K-9 program, there's some true obedience that's need to be taking place. I mean, sit, stop and roll, heck, we can do that, you can do that on your own.
So it's a whole science.
They've been doing this for two years now, so it's, you may want to check it out, Commissioner Washington. The classes are on the evenings and weekends.
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't know we had.
So, so our dog needs.
So our dog needs a little bit more training, but he needs a dog whisperer. Not somebody that's gonna...
So these are the people that I've been seeing at the fairs, then they are, he is excellent with dogs, so you might want to look into it, because they're really good.
So, the contract says that they'll provide household canine management, canine-related education, and teach youth how to learn about dog training. They also will prepare safety kits for their dogs and learn communication skills. So it's interactive.
Okay. You give them a lot for your investment, okay.
So you register for that over at Johnson Park, is that...
Ms. Bing, at Johnson Park, is that where you register? You register at Johnson Park? What do you register for the K-9 training?
I want to say yes, but I'm not sure I'm on that.
Well, listen, Johnson Park is the central location for all parks and recreation. I would believe that if you give them a call, they'll be able to point you in the right direction in terms of the K-9 training that we offer. And I'm glad Chief Sanders was able to share what's on the docket in terms of the training and what all it entails. So I think there's a lot for folks that's looking for some obedience training for... This is only for your dog now. This is only for your dog. Take nothing else over there.
Take your children.
K-9 training for dogs. Just wanted to clear that up. Go ahead. Next item, please.
Okay, moving along. Item 545 is with Amelia Technologies USA through the Parks and Recreation Department for registration software. The amount is fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars per year. The term is thirty-six month period, and it's billed annually. Item 546 is with Flock Group Incorporated through the Sheriff's Office. This is for software to detect, decode, and deliver evidence to eliminate crime. The amount is five hundred, thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's a five-year contract, with year one at a hundred and eighteen thousand. Year two through year five is a hundred and five thousand dollars each year. The initial term is sixty months, and then auto-renews for twenty-four months.
Well, can I talk about this Flock program? I know the sheriff's not here, but when he had, he had a informational, where he invited the community to come and see what the sheriff's departments are doing. And one of the things that the people that were in the community were so impressed was with were the Flock systems and how they've been able to assist, if they have Flock systems in the subdivision, they've been able to assist them apprehend criminals. And there was, the sheriff at that time said that there's a whole quadrant of, in the county, that needed Flock devices. So hopefully, this would go to bridge that gap, to cover the entire county, so that people are aware of, I mean, can help with the apprehension of the criminals. The Flock devices, I think they read your tags, and then if there's an alert out for your car or whatever, then the law enforcement knows exactly where it is. So hopefully now, we could have full coverage in the county with these, so I'm excited about this.
And let me say this, Commissioner, because I don't want to mislead people. I know you're absolutely right. Sheriff Levitt is leading that initiative. He in his office is leading that effort. I don't want folks to think that every subdivision or community has a camera or license plate reader that can catch them, but I think the Sheriff's Office is encouraging.
Absolutely.
They're encouraging as many of the local HOA subdivisions and communities to invest into this equipment. This won't cover all of them.
Right, no, no, no.
I just want to make sure, you know, some type of folks here, they hear what they want to hear, and I want to make sure we bring clarification.
And I don't think any of these were slotted for subdivisions. They were, there was, like I said, a quadrant of the county that didn't, that's naked. Right, that he wanted to fill in, and I think this goes for that quadrant of the county.
Outstanding, outstanding.
Okay.
Item 547 is with Univar Solutions USA Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for hydrofluoric acid. This is change order number two to Contract 2021-219 to increase the unit price per pound. An estimated yearly cost is forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-eight dollars, and is to renew the contract term through December 13th, 2024. Item 548 is with Helix Grading and Utility LLC through the Water Resources Department for construction and installation of Georgia Highway 138 Sewer Main Extension. This is High Rock to White Road. The amount is two million, seven hundred, thirty-five thousand, six hundred, thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents, and it's three hundred and seventy days from the notice to proceed. Item 549 is with DAF Concrete Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is the unit price on-call concrete, one of two recommended awardees. This is for one year, option to renew two additional one-year periods.
The Comis-, I'm sorry, Executive Director, let me, Commissioners, let me bring this one to your attention. Item 2023-548, the Executive Director just read it, the Helix Grading and Utility LLC, and talking about the 138 Main Extension, High Rock to White Road. From economic development standpoint, this is a big deal for Rockdale County. I wanted to make sure I said that, because we just received an email the other day from residents inquiring about how do we grow from an economic development standpoint on the northern side of the county. Director Peak, you want to add anything? I don't want to belabor our meeting, but I don't want to gloss over, glaze over this very important piece that will contribute to economic development moving forward. Director Peak is our RWR Director.
Okay, good morning, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Absolutely, Chairman, this project over here, we will actually install 5,000 linear feet of sanitary sewer main. So absolutely, it will help with new development that want to come in. We're extending sewer, our sewer main, to where we can take it to the treatment facility.
And I really appreciate you explaining that, because part of the email that I read was one of the residents inquiring about the amount of rock in Rockdale County. Well, the true answer to that is, we'd end up having the dynamite blow up the north side of the county. We can't do that. There are areas in the county we just won't have sewer, because it is what it is due to the amount of rock that's spread throughout the county. And it's not limited to the north side, it's also on the south side as well. But I wanted to point that out, because sometimes citizens don't know and don't understand, we can't just run sewer in areas where we have so much rock, to the degree that it will cost way much money than it makes sense to invest in. Absolutely. Thank you so much, Director Peak. I wanted to make sure we pointed that out. This is going to have a very positive impact on economic development as we move forward. Next item, please.
Item 550 is with the M. Mitchell Group LLC through the General Services Department. This is for unit price on-call concrete. This is two of two recommended awardees. The term is one year option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 551 is with American Facility Services Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for general janitorial custodial services at various county locations. This is for unit price and one of two recommended awardees. It is for 12 months with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 552 is with Building Maintenance Services Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for general janitorial custodial services at various county locations at a unit price. This is two of two recommended awardees, and it's for 12 months with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 553 is with Matrix Engineering Group Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for the on-call materials and field testing and analysis services at a unit price. This is two years with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 554 is with Snapping Shoals EMC through the General Services Department for EMA 911 located at 3525 Highway 138 for security lighting. The amount is forty-six dollars and eighty cents per month for 12 months, and it shall auto-renew unless canceled. Item 555 is with KaraSoft Technology Corporation First Do through the Fire and Rescue Department. This is for emergency reporting software. The amount is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. The initial term is 14 months from effective date, and will auto-renew for successive terms of 12 months each. Item 556 is with Hatley Plans LLC through the Planning and Development Department. This is for the 2023 Annual Capital Improvements Element CIE Update Report. The amount is four thousand, five hundred dollars, and the term is for six months. Item 557 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department through Bound and Caldwell to prepare a sewer model for the Old Salem Pump Station basin within the Snapping Shoals, and to perform a capacity assessment. The amount is one hundred, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred, sixteen dollars. Item 558 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Corporate Environmental Risk Management, SERM, for the Sewer Rehabilitation Program for 2023. This is for the additional funds needed to carry the program through 2023. The amount is two hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars, with the new PO amount totaling one million, twenty-five thousand dollars. Item 559 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Corporate Environmental Risk Management, SERM. This is for engineering staff augmentation support for 2023. The additional funds needed to carry the program through 2023, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, making the new PO amount six hundred, thirty thousand dollars. Item 560 is a requisition through the Water Treatment Plant for Cedar Chem LLC for Polyaluminum Chloride. These are additional funds for the chemical supply through 2023. The amount is forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Item 561 is a requisition through the Water Treatment Plant for Cedar Chem LLC for Polyaluminum Chloride. The term is December 14th, 2023, through December 13th, 2024. The amount is one hundred, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars, and it's the 2024 budget. Item 562 is a requisition through the Water Treatment Plant for C2I Control Instruments Incorporated. This is for technical services for data concentrator and SCADA upgrade. The amount is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, eighty-one dollars. Item 563 is a requisition for the Water Treatment Plant for Vaness Hagan Brussels Inc. for the long-term water quality and biological monitoring services. This is for the stream walk and annual report. The amount is seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars for the 2024 budget. Item 564 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Laz and Associates LLC. This is for the RDOT break room, restrooms, and the voting slash training improvements. The amount is ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred, eighty-two dollars. Item 565 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Raindrop Products. This is for the splash pad installation at Wheeler Park. The amount is three hundred, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred, fourteen dollars and sixty cents, and this is SPOST-funded. Item 566 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Artisan Concrete Services Doing Business as Artisans Skate Parks. This is for the skate park installation at Wheeler Park. The amount is seven hundred, thirty-two thousand, six hundred, fifty-two dollars, and this is funded through impact fees and SPOST.
Outstanding.
Okay. Item 567 is a requisition through the Stormwater Department for Benchmark Management. This is for the additional funds for plan reviewing services for commercial and residential site development projects. The amount is two hundred, twenty-seven thousand dollars, making the new PO total seven hundred, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. Item 568 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Laz and Associates LLC. This is for the deputy workstation renovations for Dorm 6A and 6B. The amount is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, fifty dollars.
Can we go back to 567, please, the plan review services? I just want to talk about, because that is something that we so often, we hear that we don't have capacity and that we need to get input from everybody when we have development. So is this something that we're using to curtail those apprehensions in our development? Is that what we're looking at?
In a nutshell, yes, but it's a little bit more detailed than that. Plan review is basically a protective mechanism.
Right.
We're going to protect, A, our citizens that are moving into Rockdale County to purchase homes, to open up commercial businesses when they're building new commercial businesses. The second piece is also to protect the environment in regards to your erosion and sediment control. A wise man, you know, uses this phrase, inspect what you expect. So a lot of times, we can expect our developers, our construction companies, to do the right thing when developing and grading property and things in Rockdale County. We can expect them to do the right thing. But this helps us to actually be able to go out and inspect and put our eyes on it and document that, okay, they're out here, they're doing the right thing, they have their proper erosion and sediment control BNP's in, that if the plans say they're putting a 30-inch pipe in the ground to convey stormwater, that is it in fact, a 30-inch pipe made out of the proper material according to plan. This is just a protection mechanism to make sure that we are out here, boots on the ground, and we are making sure that we are getting, getting what we deserve in regards to quality control and workmanship.
So is it, is it paper, and then after we review what they have on paper, we're going out to inspect it once it's there?
Yes, we have a plan review process to where we review the plans when they come in before these jobs, before they even break ground.
Right.
We come in, review these plans, they are approved. But that's just part of it. Once these plans are reviewed, we still have to ensure that they're doing things according to the design plan. Because, you know.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Sivkens. Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Next item, please.
All right, Item 569 is an expenditure request with RDJE through the Water Resources Department for 2440 Tatum Road, the Quig Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant for Emergency Force Main Repair. The amount is twenty-three thousand, three hundred, ten dollars and fifteen cents. Item 570 is surplus of equipment from the General Services Department. Item 571 is a resolution urging the Governor and the General Assembly of Georgia to continue efforts to reform and improve mental health services for the citizens of Georgia. This was a resolution that was requested through the Association County Commissioners of Georgia that hopefully all 150 counties will be submitting.
Wait, can we, can we get it read? I think Dr. Williams, maybe not now, but maybe next.
So if you would like, what we can do is put this on the regular agenda for next Tuesday, and then have it read instead of have it under consent?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sounds good, but Dr. Williams, you want to make some comments about this?
Well, I do. Henry Craig, Commissioner Henry Craig from Baldwin County, who is the President of ACCG this year, has a passion about mental health. And so he, because House Bill 520 did not pass last year for a number of reasons, and talking to different people, it does need some tweaking still. But he wants to use the entire county, the entire state, each Board of Commissioners to complete this resolution to present to the Governor with some power and influence that here's what all these counties need. They need more assistance, they need more funding. And we have it here to say that this many counties need it. And he is really, really pushing every single county to sign this, to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Item 572 is a volunteer appointment for the reappointment of Dr. Gala J. Dillard to the Board of Health. The term is January 2024 through December 2029. Item 573 is an ordinance to make and provide appropriations for the period beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024. To make and provide such appropriations for the operations of the Rockdale County Government, its departments, boards, and other agencies and funds, including all elected county officers and their employees to provide for the control and administration of all funds of such agencies from all sources to provide an effective date to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 574 is rezoning case 2023-01. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning Southeast Salem Road. amended by rezoning southeast Salem Road from SRC NC Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial District to SRC MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 575 is rezoning case 2023-04. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2405 Southeast Salem Road, Conyers, Georgia 30094, from SRC NC Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood to ONI Office and Institutional for, for commercial development to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 576, a special use permit case 2023-01. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to authorize a special use permit for a 200-foot AGL monopole communication tower and related telecommunications facilities at 2400 Southwest Tucker Mill Road, Conyers, Georgia 30012 to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 577 is text amendment case 2023-06. An ordinance to amend the, the text of Section 202-6B2, Relationship to Comprehensive Plan, Table of Zoning Districts Permitted in Each Land Use Category of the Comprehensive Plan, and Section 206-5B1, Collaborative Residential Subdivision, Applicability of the Comprehensive Plan of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended, changing and identifying the future land use categories of Rockdale County Comprehensive Plan where the Collaborative Residential Subdivision CRS District can be permitted. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 578 is rezoning case 2023-11. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2470 Flat Shoals Road Southeast from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 579 is rezoning case 2023-14. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning Zero Flat Shoals Road Southeast from SRC CID Salem Road Corridor Civic Institutional to SRC MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. And item 580 is a special use permit case 2023-04. An ordinance to authorize a special use permit to allow an expansion and upgrade of an existing recycling and salvage facility located at 2314 Dogwood Drive Southeast, Conyers, Georgia 30013, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
Okay. Commissioners, I think that complete our agenda review for, um, next week. At this time, we will move into public comment, is that right?
Yes, we will. I don't have any, all right, well, while she's collecting the cards, I'll read the disclaimer.
Okay.
All right. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use or abuse of, the use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Executive Director. First up, I'll call Ms. Cheryl Morton, Moltun, Mr. Molt, Ms. Moltun, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Cheryl Moltun. I live at 3305 Squire Lane in Conyers in southeast portion of Rockdale. Um, yesterday morning, I sent Commissioners and Chairman and Chief Mac, um, an email regarding my concern of the fire that happened Sunday at Fairview Fieldstone View Lane.
Right.
Um, thank God those, that community is tight knit because one gentleman that lives next door was able to knock on a homeowner's door that caught fire that day and woke him up because he had been up the night before. He was asleep on the second floor.
Hmm.
The concern that I have is there's presumably two working fire hydrants in that whole subdivision. I'm not sure how many homes are in there, but I would presume it's probably about 150. That subdivision was built in 1981, and we all know that fire protection and fire alarms are supposed to be replaced every 10 years. I'm not sure those people got that warning. The gentleman that did make it out, that his neighbor did wake him up and knocked on his door and his windows until he came out, was very grateful the next morning that his neighbor saved his life that day. Um, if there's only two working fire hydrants in that subdivision, is there a way to upgrade and bring it up to code so those people are safe and that they don't have to worry about waking up the next day? In 2013, the Glass family, do you remember Reba Glass?
I do.
She lost her life and four children because of non-working smoke detectors. From what I understand, those are free through the Red Cross, and I understand we just had Fire Prevention Week, um, October 13th, and I'm not sure if anybody came out. I'm not degrading anyone, but that is a low-income subdivision now, is 42 years old. And those people are paying $1,500 to $1,700 rent to rental companies to not even be assured that they're safe. Thank God for their neighbors. I thank you for your time today. Uh, by the way, I never got a response from anyone's email, and I thought that was very important, especially with what happened Sunday.
Thank you, Ms. Moltun, and thank you for your time this morning and all of what you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I will tell you that, um, in my haste to respond, because I did receive your email, uh, it became a priority one. Both Chief McDaniel as well as Director Peak immediately responded. So I, and I also want to make very clear that there's no blanket statement, you know, if there's an emergency, um, anywhere in Rockdale County. Public safety has always remained our number one top priority, and it will always remain our number one top priority. When I read the email about the low pressure of the fire hydrants, um, Chief Mac responded immediately, as so as Director Peak, and I can assure you that this has been placed with the highest level of priority. Also want to take this opportunity, said, uh, Commissioners, to say thank you to the, the citizen who was able to respond and assist the gentleman. Um, that just speaks to the, the character of the kind of citizens we have here in Rockdale County. And not only do I remember the, the glass incident off of Irwin Bridge Road, I too responded. So, um, this is a priority for us. Thank you, Ms. Moltun, for bringing this to our attention. I do want to apologize, uh, I was so eager to get the right people, uh, attention, uh, that we didn't, uh, respond back to you. The Commissioners were made aware as well, and they knew that, um, we shared the same concern that we had the balls rolling. So, um, rest assured that we're on top of that and we'll make sure that, and let me say, regardless of the demographic of any community, okay, of any community in Rockdale County, w- we don't discriminate when it comes to saving lives in, in terms of our first responders going out there. I, I don't care what you pay, whether you live in a shack, a shed, or a mansion, your life mattered to Rockdale County. So thank you so much. Wanted to make sure I pointed that out. Commissioner Washington?
Um, I was wondering, Chief Mac, if we could have the fire safety prevention officers maybe do a blitz of the neighborhood? I know they've done that in the past.
Well, and I'm glad you pointed it out, but when I read Chief McDaniel's very comprehensive response to me yesterday, trust that between Chief McDaniel and Director Peak, they got it smothered and covered like the folks at the Woffler House.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're all over it. Trust me, they're all over it.
We didn't get that.
She, she, she knew exactly who to dispatch and how to, uh, operate. Absolutely. I, I'm gonna move on to our next speaker, Ms. Corliss Turner. Come on up, Ms. Turner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to piggyback off the safety and, uh, concerns for the citizens. I am Corliss Turner. I'm the, uh, founder of Voices for Rockdale, and I'm speaking on behalf of all the Rockdale citizens, not just the members of Voices. You mentioned the word critical, and that's exactly what I'm going to say. It is critical that the county pays attention to those as handicapped and those as disabled. I did speak to, I don't know if it's Director or Deputy, whatever, uh, Ms. Mills is called. I do apologize. I spoke to her about it. She's allowing these two chairs here. She did say that she couldn't stop anyone from sitting in them today. I had to ask someone worthy disabled so I can sit in the chair because I am disabled and a senior. I made 67 Sunday.
Happy birthday, Ms. Turner.
I will be up for 67 years.
Happy birthday.
But anyway, um, the thing is, is that there's not really accommodations for seniors coming to this meeting. You can get the stickers and put handicap, although that's not going to stop anyone for, you know, sitting in a chair because I see young teens in the store in the scooter. But also I noticed, because I used to park over here, that every one of the spots over here is designated for a county employee. There was a handicap there, and then I think the next spot was for the sheriff. Uh, the handicap is in the back of the building? You can't come in the back of the building. Last week, when you had a crowd for the, um, zoning, there were people stopping in the street, dropping their handicap passenger off. I do believe by the ADA that those handicap spots have to be within so many feet of the doorway, of, of the entrance. So I don't know who thought about changing that over here on the side. It's difficult. Um, I was downtown, Conyers, a lady had to kind of park on the street. She was in a walker, and matter of fact, I think it was right here. She was o- o- on a walker, so she's trying to get out on the driver's side into this traffic that's coming. Um, and so a couple of us, you know, kind of helped her, but I just, uh, feel like there are no, we've had to sit over here, which is no problem. I don't mind sitting over there, but something has to be done for the handicapped and disabled because there's a lot that would like to come to the meeting. So when you do your building of the, uh, new complex, please be considered of that and considered upstairs because, uh, there's no way, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, if you go up that ramp to get over to this door. But that's all I want to say. It's very critical, especially that I'm experiencing, I've been experiencing, but if I don't hurt, I let somebody else have the handicap spot in the parking lot. But I'll park in the regular, and then I think they're gonna get upset because she's supposed to be in handicap. Just have consideration for us, okay?
Ms. Turner, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming out this morning and reminding us all, all of our directors, our General Services Director, who is chiefly responsible for all of our buildings and facilities, is here, and he has been taking notes the whole time you've been talking. And I'm particularly interested in those having the ability to come to our VOC meeting and making sure that we, as a county, are in compliance with all of the ADA requirements. The good news is that with our brand-new facility that has come in online, that there will be ample enough parking and access to all of our new builders and facilities. I'm so glad you mentioned that because that's one of the multiple reasons why we're getting ready to renovate this old facility, because I don't know whether you've ever been to a restroom over there in the courthouse, it's tighter than tight. But we're going to make certain that we, um, heard what you've said this morning concerning where we are now, because we won't be going into that facility next week. We will make the right adjustments and accommodations to accommodate those that has any handicap or disabilities so that they can access our meetings. You're right. I chuckled within myself when I heard you talk about the seat and somebody was sitting in it. I'm a church boy. It reminded me of Ms. Jenkins, who sits on the far right corner of the third pew, and she's been there for 70 something years. I believe Ms. Jenkins would take the peppermint out of her mouth and cut you if you sit in her seat. But, uh, we hear you loud and clear, and we don't want you to have a Ms. Jenkins episode here at, at 901 Main Street. We'll take care of it. Thank you. Y'all give Ms. Turner a round of applause. Yes, indeed. Director Hammer, I know you got all of that. I know you got every drip drop of that. Come on up, Ms. Geller, Charlotte Geller, Ms. Geller, come on up. Absolutely.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm grateful to be here today. Couple of things about the agenda today. Uh, it was the first reading of the budget, and I'm disappointed that it's the same amount, same numbers that, that was presented at the Budget Public Hearing. None of you have looked for any savings, any efficiencies, particularly since you're having to put more away to save for bond debt. And if the millage is projected to stay the same, it, it won't matter because the assessments then will have to go up to cover the increased budget and to keep the same millage. I, the, uh, Sunday brunch at Costly Mill Park event is $25. I'm glad to see that y'all are starting to charge for some of these events that, that get people to come, that we have to pay the entertainers for. I would like to suggest you consider doing that for the Summer Concert Series, particularly since if some of the groups have a big following from Atlanta and they come out here and take up all of our parking places, that we have to pay more to find, pave more parking to have them. Consider charging a nominal fee for those, particularly where we have to pay entertainers. Uh, the Chairman, the one you pointed out, the helix for the 138 sewer expansion, uh, number seven on their contract says that they have to have blasting insurance. The contractor shall not commence any work under this contract until all insurance with blasting operations, coverage, and bonds stipulated in the invitation to bid have been obtained, and such insurance and bonds have been approved by the county. I hope y'all will keep on top of that. You talked about economic development, that the extension of the sewer, sewer could bring, but Anthony, who was over on Stigman Road, sent a warrant act notice to Department of Level, excuse me, Department of Labor, they're cutting 136 jobs. And with all the businesses, restaurants, gas stations that are closing because of the widening different roads, we're, we're losing jobs, we're losing employee, people to live here. The fire software, that's awfully expensive, $87,000, but I see the module is for a population of 200, excuse me, 750,000 people to a million people. Perhaps if we got the proper module, it won't cost that much because we don't have anywhere near $750,000. And by the way, considering ISOs, ISO is not just dependent on the fire department, it also includes water, water resources, and E911. I have a few more comments, but my time is up.
So you, I think you requested a little bit more time. Is that what you were doing? You said you had a few more comments.
Yes, Commissioner, I do, if you would allow it.
Can you give them to me in the cake version if I extend you a little bit more time?
Okay. Uh, the splash pad, uh, y'all went with a Sourcewell contractor. Sourcewell are firms that the state of Georgia has gotten contracts with. However, I don't know if they, they comply with Commissioner Washington's minority groups. And for the skate park, there were two of them listed under Sourcewell contracts, but, and you picked one. I don't know why you picked one. The splash pad, you're putting money in, in it now at Wheeler Park. It's only open three months out of the year, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. This year, it was closed for a whole month due to vandalism. So, if there's gonna be another splash pad at Wheeler Park, are we gonna have to pay an attendant to be there to watch, so there is no vandalism? And then when it's not open, what happens at night? The skate park, again, that was a Sourcewell, and it saves time by not bidding things out to use Sourcewell. But again, we don't know if they're minority contractors. I was concerned about liabilities for skate parks, so I contacted Newton County, which does have one. Someone from their Recreation Commission said they put up the rules, and I learned all about the RPA, the Recreation Property Act. And I guess that's all of my additional comments. Thank you for allowing me more time.
Thank you, Ms. Geller, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. As you take your seat, I will tell you that our Director of Parks and Recreation is out receiving an award on behalf of Rockdale County. In fact, he's talked to me very clearly about the, the water park and the, particularly the splash park that's going over to Wheeler, Wheeler Park. We've learned a lot from the Millstead Park in terms of what has happened with vandalism. The height of the summer is during the time when we have the splash pad open to our young people. We've also had some very robust conversations about safety and security. We've put some solar lights. I'm not sure you're familiar, out on Wheeler Park in the darkest segment of our walking trail, and twice, they've been vandalized. Now, we have some security in place. I won't announce all of the security, because we wanna catch the vandals. But we're thinking forward, and the county is growing, and you're right. We're not growing to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people. We certainly won't be doing that. But we are thinking forward in terms of how we plan and prepare for the days ahead. So, we certainly do appreciate your feedback, and just wanted to give you that update. Also, Director Redman, who has become Commissioner's, so much more engaged with citizens. He's teaching and explaining about all of the various different aspects of Parks and Recreation, because we're getting a lot of inquiries, you know. Pickleball is a big deal. The bicycles is a big deal, and all of the different things that we're doing across the county. And he said to me this morning before we left C. Steel with the ribbon cutting, he says, Chairman, please direct any inquiries directly to Parks and Recreation, so I can explain and share and educate how the county is moving forward. One other thing I want to point out that Ms. Geller brought up. We heard you loud and clear, and I really appreciate you saying it, because oftentimes when we say it, it has a different sound. But she made mention of her excitement that we're now having events and activities that are charging some of the residents. Well, there's a few people who are excited about that. Then there's another group who don't think they should pay anything beyond their tax dollars. So, we're hearing it from both angles. So, having folks to come out and be a part of, of these meetings make a big difference. Some say, Ms. Chester, they don't wanna pay. Some pay, yeah, let's, 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 let's charge folks to come. Parks and Recreation in Rockdale County is taking a page out of all of the departments throughout the region and looking at what is the best fit for Rockdale County. And you gave a big shout-out to the upcoming November twelfth Sunday Brunch event, and I've been told that they're going all out for the Sunday Brunch event on November the twelfth. So, if you haven't gotten your ticket, and there is a ticket price involved, don't let Ms. Bean exit the building, because she runs Costly Mill. She might not tell you everything about over at Johnson Park, but she got Costly Mill from the ruder to the tooter down pat. She can answer any questions about it, and particularly the November twelfth Sunday Brunch. They'll roll it out the red carpet. Norinda, it's gonna be everything your heart will desire for this summer brunch over at Costly Mill Park. Executive Director Rutledge, we've got more business to take care of, but I wanna make sure I yield now to the board comments, and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Washington. Commissioner?
Sure. First, today is Election Day.
It is.
And the city is, we do have a city election. We have three city council members that their seats are up for election. So, if you live in the city, please go and vote. I, I will say, abysmal, I think, as of Friday, only two, less than two percent of the eligible voters have voted in the election. So, if you live in the city, please get out and vote. My second point was the Transportation Summit. Outstanding job. Outstanding. And after, at sitting reflecting after the summit, I remember our first Transportation Summit when it was a novel idea. You know, people were like, why would you get these people to come out to Rockdale County? What are they gonna do? There's no transportation coming to Rockdale County. And we've had one ever since. And the amount of work that is about to come through this county on a, not just state, but local level, is astounding. And I will, I told Commissioner Williams as we were sitting there that I will attest that that is a testament to your advocacy. Whenever we're in DC, we have been to the Department of Transportation, because this man has said, this is a priority, and we're going, they're not gonna overlook us. The state of Georgia here made mention of the advocacy for the fences. The fact that we, it, it's taken twenty-five years for them to let the Courtesy Parkway, but the fact that they're getting ready to let that and the provisions for 138 and the provisions for Highway High twenty, and we got Sigmund Road from the beginning to the end to 138 on the way, and Salem Road, all within a five-year period, is unbelievable. And I, and, and, and I will say that that primarily is, is leadership. So, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Director Kelly. But amazing Transportation Summit. A lot of people were excited. The mayor even said, he was like, I didn't realize all this was going on in this, in this county as far as transportation. And now we need to still work on the auxiliary roads, but that's another conversation. But y'all, excellent Transportation Summit. And everybody who sees all of the work that's getting ready to go in this county needs to be proud of what we're doing with the resources we have. We, I, and East Metro Business Network, today and tomorrow, we're hosting a credit counseling seminar. A lot of people don't understand economic development. People who are looking to put certain retail establishments, they pull the credit of the community also. Also, business credit is personal credit, so we want to help people who may have suffered in their credit, have credit problems, get their credit together. So, that's today and tomorrow at C. Steel Community Center from six to nine, six to eight PM. Also, we're having a veterans forum, where we're going to celebrate veterans on Saturday at Wheeler Park slash Restoration Storehouse. We're gonna have vendors that are veteran or senior. So, if you are, have a, if you are a vendor, we are still accepting vendors. But we're also gonna teach pickleball and line dancing. So, if, Chairman, if you wanna learn how to play pickleball. Commissioner Williams, if you wanna learn how to play pickleball or line dance. We will have, we can have you taken care of. That's gonna be this Saturday from ten to two. Did you say, Jennifer, that you're gonna learn?
Can you do both at the same time?
I don't think you want to. But we'll be at Wheeler Park on this Saturday. And once again, we are still accepting vendors. Finally, we, Ms. Geller indicated that we are in the budget process, which means that we haven't finalized, we haven't voted on the budget yet. Last year, I asked for everybody to look at the budget, make comments, suggestions on the budget. I'm asking again. I think I had two people that took me up on that offer last year and emailed me, and, and I know you all remember me doing this. So, once again, please, look at the budget, email me, call me. Let's talk about it. But this is a project, and we haven't voted on the budget yet. So, there's still time for us to get our thoughts together on that. And the, the brunch, I'm so looking forward to the brunch. Ms. Bean always does a phenomenal job on everything, and Corey Brown always does an outstanding job. So, the two of them together is gonna be amazing. So, I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have.
All right. And Commissioner Williams?
So, I just crossed off a bunch of stuff. I did vote last week. Out of the three districts that are up for election, there are two that have challenges. And so, one is unopposed, but those other two, it's really important to get out to vote. Sometimes, you know, a handful of people make the decision on who becomes the city councilman, or person, I should say. I was really happy to read the retired educator's proclamation today. It made me think that I was fifteen when I decided I wanted to be a teacher. Because, a couple of reasons. My father was an educator, but my, I had a teacher that really influenced my decision. And I never wavered from that and went straight through and really enjoyed my career, as I've had time to reflect on it over the years since I've retired. The ribbon cuttings this week have been really inspiring, and, you know, they, they make you proud of Rockdale County. And we heard about the adoption trailer today. We had that ribbon cutting. Next week, we will hear extensively about the two-wheel bike ribbon cutting today and what that is bringing to Rockdale County, and I think that is, I think that's awesome. I just might buy a helmet and see if I can get on a bike again after all these years.
But no kayak.
Not with you.
You missed that, Chairman.
I'll go with somebody experienced.
So, we need a Parks and Recreation contractor for kayak lessons now?
I might just do that.
If you're gonna get me into one. Saturday after this last weekend was the Global Grower Network's Fall Festival. And that was really interesting. They presented to us several years ago and, and asked for a zoning change, so that they could develop this 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And what they do is they partner with people from different cultures who grow fresh food for their families and for local marketplaces. And it says, "Together, we build and sustain networks of land, resources, markets, and people in order to create a more equitable food system that is driven by cultural diversity, inclusive economies, and regenerative agricultural practices." So, part of what I learned Saturday was that one, one plot of the acreage is for beginners, because several of the other plots are for those who already understand organic agriculture, organic farming practices, and what that takes. But they know that, that someone who's just starting out, they don't have all of that knowledge and, and, and the certifications needed and all of that, and so they have a beginner's property. It was, I, I purchased some very fresh food from them, and I haven't prepared all of it, but what has been prepared has been really, you know, there's nothing like something fresh pulled out of the ground that day or the day before, compared to what you can get in the stores. So, that was, that was also really interesting. They also have a retreat house out there that they rent out for occasions and, you know, events. And so, I thought that, I didn't know that. That was interesting. The Transportation Summit, I thought of it yesterday as I was coming down Sigmund Road and from the interstate towards town, and I saw all the sidewalks. The five-foot sidewalk is in. The ten-foot sidewalk has the forms down, and they'll be, should be laying that soon. But the lighting along Sigmund Road is really, really nice. And I thought of Commissioner Washington, because she was very insistent on the design of this gateway into Rockdale County. And I loved it. It was very welcoming. And they should be, they mentioned the summit that they should be finished quite soon with that stretch of the road being widened. And so, I'm looking forward to not seeing orange cans all on that. Had an opportunity to go to the Georgia Community Service Board's, the State Educational Exchange, a couple of weeks ago, up at Lake Lanier. Lots of good information. Again, emphasizing how important it is to advocate for better access to mental health services and substance abuse, addiction services. Commissioner Tanner, Kevin Tanner, who is the Commissioner for the Department of Behavioral Health and Development of Disabilities, spoke at that and talked about his vision to increase that, those services and the access to those services. So, that was an opportunity for me to, you know, just remind him who I was and what we're doing in Rockdale County, and he has been out a couple of times, so. But it's always good to stay on the radar of the people who make decisions. The last thing I have is Turkeys and Testimonies. Is an event being planned by Grit and Grace, which is an addiction recovery support center and a recovery community organization. They are just moving so fast in the different programs and the different supports that they have and are providing for those in our community who are coming into recovery, who are coming out of jail, who are within the Accountability Court system, or just people who are in our community and interested in recovery. This event will be Tuesday, November twenty-first, and they are giving away turkeys from two to five PM that day at fourteen hundred Parker Road. I don't think it'll compete with what you're doing. I think there's plenty of need in our community. Their focus, of course, is on the recovery community. And, and then at six o'clock, from six to eight, they are having a banquet. And it will be an opportunity for people to, this is where the testimonies part comes in, to share their experiences with recovery and how they have been supported and what has been helpful to them. Both of those are free. There is a registration required for the banquet, and it is on Eventbrite. But I am really, really excited about the work going on with our recovery community and how well they are working with our court system, with the judges, with the jail and the sheriff. And, and they, they go into the jail twice a week and conduct classes. They also, Gwinnett County Jail heard about what they were doing in Rockdale and called them and said, you know, can you come do that for us too? So, they are doing that once a week, virtually. So they are doing that once a week, virtually. Here, they're going in in person, but, so it's really, you know, it's a month to celebrate our veterans, it's a month to celebrate our retired educators, it's a month to think about gratitude and to, you know, while we all don't have perfect lives, I don't know anybody that has a perfect life to you. Okay.
Okay, Jane.
He thinks he does.
Pretty much does.
Okay. But while we don't have perfect lives, there's a lot that, if we focus on what we are grateful for and what goodness has been in our lives, it can, it can make us feel better, and it can make us handle our troubles and our trials so much better.
Amen.
So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Any additional thoughts?
No, not yet.
All right. Well, I want to echo what both of the Commissioners have already pointed out, and I'm gonna ask you to give a round of applause to Director Kelly and our DOT department. Commissioner Washington is absolutely correct. This is, I think, our fifth year that we've hosted with one interruption of COVID, our Transportation Summit, and really to draw attention to Rockdale County and the multiple projects we have as it relates to transportation in Rockdale County. I won't be redundant and repeat all of those projects, but we are rocking and rolling in Rockdale, and to make sure that, the fact that we're the second smallest county throughout the region or in the state, should I say, that we host our very own Transportation Summit so that the folks on the national level, as well as the state level and across the region, that we count on in terms of partnerships, ARC and GDOT, and of course on the national level, that we have them here in Rockdale County highlighting, spotlighting, and focuses on what we're doing in Rockdale County. Director Kelly, you did, this has had, had to have been the best year for a summit, and you and your staff did a fantastic job. Y'all give them another round. And I've just been told that we have a video highlighting the event, and we'll ask the PR department if they would go ahead and show us that video at this time.
The Rockdale Department of Transportation recently held the 2023 Transportation Summit. Every year, the department invites local, states, and federal partners to discuss the goals of the department, current initiatives, projects, and how to improve transportation in Rockdale County. RDOT and their guests discussed the new comprehensive transportation program, ways to make Rockdale Road safer, Sigmund Road widening, pavement preservation, Courtesy Parkway extension, and so much more. We are excited to see the ideas and hard work of RDOT and our partners come to fruition to shape the future of Rockdale.
Makes you wanna dance.
Yeah, it does.
You could learn line dancing to go with it.
Well, we got a lot of projects dancing all over the county. Give it up for Director Kelly again. Next up, Commissioners, I do want to spotlight the fact that we kicked off our homelessness task force just last week, the partnership between the county, the city, and the Rockdale County Public School System. We have an excellent team of very talented people through Rock, throughout Rockdale County who are serving on this task force so they can come back to us in a reasonable amount of time with a strong recommendation as to how and what we will do here in our community in Rockdale County to address, to finally stop talking about addressing homelessness, but actually do something that would really deal and address the growing issue of homelessness here in our county. There's a housing crisis across the country, and it's impacting in a natural way homelessness. So we kicked that off on last week, and I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. Also, from a safety standpoint, I thought that Mr. CJ Baker or Director Morgan was gonna make mention, the first two weeks of the month of November are typically each year the highest time when you see a good amount of deer running throughout the county. Well, right now, it's mating season, and the bucks are chasing the dogs, and they don't care about a tractor trailer, Volkswagen, or Miata, or Ugo, or bicycle. So you need to be alert, there are deer running all through the county. They run all over. I counted last week on 138 from Costly Mill, Ms. Bing, you go to work over there every day, you need to pay attention now, okay? On Costly Mill, there was four deer last week, and by the time midday come, the community improvement team had already picked them up and disposed of them and gotten them out of the road. In fact, I think Director Mills has her own personal testimony from an incident and an accident she had right on 138 last year near Costly Mill. I'm sorry to put your business out there, but you bust that deer wild over, I'm glad you was okay, and we got you a new car and all that good stuff, but I'm just, I'm just saying, be mindful of the deer, they're running all through the county, and it's not limited to the first two weeks of November. Let me clean that up, Deidre. They run all the time, they run, they run all the time, but this is the highest peak of the season. I told you, the buck is chasing the doe, and it's mating season, so, and neither one of them stopping and yielding to anything, Andre, they're just coming right on out and she trying to get away from him, and then they'll, and before you know it, they'll be in your front seat. So be careful as you head out. Had to put, that's a safety factor, I want to point that out.
Definitely is a safety factor.
A next thing I want to make mention, and I appreciate what Commissioner Williams just said, you're absolutely right. There's so many people in our community that are in need. As we service the needs of the folks in our community, we're not competing. There is no competition. In fact, I think there's so many people that are in need, there's not enough folk who out there servicing the need. So we really appreciate Mr. Bill Corruthers, he told me a few weeks ago what they were doing and the whole initiative with the turkeys. But we have kicked off our 2023 Senior Citizens Turkey Drive, and I believe this is year number 15 that we're proud to say that we've been servicing the citizens in Rockdale County, Ms. Bing, for over 15 long years. And we've kicked it off, as you know, 1636 Dogwood Drive over at Courtesy Ford is our primary drop-off location. You'd also drop off a turkey over at the Olivia Haydale Senior Center on Dogwood Drive. And give, if you have it in your heart and you have an extra few dollars that you can pick up and afford to donate a turkey, we want you to do that. We've been doing it for 15 years, and we don't have to make a big announcement, the folks will be lined up on the giveaway day out there to receive a turkey. Let me just say this, I say it every year, Commissioners, there are so many seniors, grandparents, who are stuck raising grandchildren for whatever reason, and that turkey is the most expensive part of that meal. And she needs a way, or he needs a way to figure out how to support those young people, particularly during Thanksgiving Day. So if you have it in your, and it's a blessing to be a blessing, so if you have it and you can do it, we want you to do it. But I also want to recognize our 2023 Project Coordinator, Ms. Stacy Bonner Lewis. Stand up, Ms. Lewis, stand up, Lewis. Y'all give her a round of applause. She is well, we have so many talented people in the Rockdale County Government, she's well-connected throughout this community, every fraternity, sorority, Masonic Lodge, every church, everybody that want to be somebody, she's knocking on their door saying, look, if you want to really get in, get in where you fit in, and turn up and donate a turkey. So we're excited about her leadership. And the last report I got just yesterday from the folks over at Courtesy Ford, man called me and said, y'all gonna come up with another freezer, because this freezer is really getting loaded. That's the county news, Ms. Bonner. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for taking this initiative. I know you're gonna come at a later date and bring us even some more information about how to do that, and we certainly do appreciate that. Last two things I have, Veterans Day is coming up, November the 11th. We want to make sure that we recognize all of our veterans. In fact, let's start today, all veterans that work for Rockdale County, stand up, please. Let's give our veterans a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, indeed. We're gonna keep doing this, Commissioners, all throughout the month of November. Thank you for your service to the citizens of the United States. We wouldn't be the country we are without the service of our veterans, those who have already served and those who are currently serving right now. Veterans Day is a big deal, we have a wonderful Walker Heroes Memorial Park. Veterans Day is on November the 11th, and I'm proud to say, Commissioners, we are only one of few counties that offer door-to-door service for those veterans who don't have transportation to their doctor's appointment. We will pick them up, take them to the appointment, wait on them, and take them back to their home. There's a lot of veterans throughout county don't have, they don't have the support, some of them don't have support. And this vehicle is operated through Parks and Recreation and Senior Services, goes door-to-door to pick up our veterans. We take care of veterans here in Rockdale County, and if you need them, just give us a call at 277-0278-7000, which is a switchboard number, and they can direct you to the person to pick up your beloved veteran, get he or she to their doctor's appointment, and provide that door-to-door service. That's something we're really proud of, and it is working very well. My last announcement this morning, you've heard me say many times that there's over 300 churches in Rockdale County. Every mile and three-quarters of a mile is a church. Government alone can't get it done in terms of taking care of the people in this community. We rely heavily on our faith-based entities to help us get it done, and our local clergy. I want to give a big shout-out to the fine folks over at the Shady Grove Baptist Church. They celebrated their 150th church anniversary, being right here. Y'all give them a round of applause. Under the leadership of Pastor Philip Baker, the Shady Grove Baptist Church, just this past Sunday, celebrated 150 years of existence right here in Rockdale County. Church is just about as old as the county itself. It takes a complete village. We are so proud of all of those people that we recognize, Mr. John McDonough, all of our teachers. Certainly don't leave without seeing the display of our animal services adoption mobile vehicle that's in the parking lot back here, also part in our progress. If you walk in and move it through the parking lot, because we're making some modifications to get a couple of our departments inside this building as we make way for construction across the street. Director, Executive Director Rutledge, is there any need for, first of all, let me just ask, Chief Sanders, any last comments or announcement you need to make coming out of your office that I've overlooked?
Just that, in observance of Veterans Day Friday is a county holiday for us here. So county offices will be closed, and also, as you just mentioned, the Board of Assessors and Talent Management are moving to 958 Mill State in the Administration Building this week.
I'm so glad you said that, particularly about the Veterans Day, because folks would have been coming up and putting, yanking on that, I'm gonna say it the way they can understand it, they would have been yanking, that's the Georgia way, yanking on that door trying to get in. We've been celebrating Veterans Day, and yes, the Board of Assessors and the Department of Talent Management have moved over to our building. So we got a lot going, we have a busy parking lot back here. But Director Hamer, did you hear everything Ms. Turner said? Okay, all right, we look forward to some adjustments and modifications in the days to come. Executive Director Rutledge, any need for executive session this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of discussing land acquisition and pending and threatened litigation.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming.
We got a motion. I move that we move into executive session for pending land acquisition, threatened litigation, and threatened litigation.
I second the motion.
Let it run you all over, that's okay, it's been promptly motioned and seconded. We're moving into executive session. This portion of our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.